Eric.
Good evening, tonight is February the fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Greetings to all of you, thank you so much for being here tonight. Our thought for today is every day may not be good, but there's something good in every day. That's Ally, that's Alice Morse Earl. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm gonna ask if Commissioner Lindsay would lead us in our prayer tonight and ask Commissioner Edwards, if he will lead us in our pledge tonight.
If everyone piled their heads. Dear Lord, we come to you today with grateful hearts for opportunity to serve our community. Grant us wisdom, patience, and discernment as we discuss matters that impact those we represent. May our words be guided by respect, our decisions by truthfulness, and our actions by justice and compassion. Bless this gathering with unity, understanding, so that we may marry together for the common good, protect our community, and inspire us to lead with humility and fairness. In your name we pray, amen.
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 Thank you guys so much. God, let's seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Lindsay, any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Next is citizens' comments. This opportunity, we allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics. Agenda topics only, have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only.
Name's Dave Norton, four three five seven, Highway one forty-two in Newborn. We have a couple of zoning items on our agenda tonight, and this is what this refers to. I am troubled by a few things I've heard recently, that we can't, won't, or not able to say no to some preliminary plats, rezone, flume, whatever, because of lawsuits. I've said it before, I'll say it again. Please do not let this board be intimidated, threatened, or coerced into something the citizens clearly do not want. You see, the young gentleman sitting to Chairman Bane's left, we pay him and his firm a lot of money to handle them type things for us. So again, please do not let our board be intimidated by such things, thank you.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Please state your name and your address for the record, please, agenda topics only.
Dennis Taylor, District Five and One, we have a house in each other. I just, the consent agenda. I just wanted to say, I like seeing these grants in the consent agenda. We need more of them. That's money that does not have to come off the back of the property owners and small business owners. I know Commissioner Sims at one time asked for a part-time grant writer. I don't know where that went, but it seems like something that would have a great return for the taxpayers. And also, the state has money. A lot more than we do, they give some back. So federal government, they're gonna give out money. Somebody's got to get it. So I hope, wish y'all would consider looking into trying to go after more grants, thank you.
Thank you, sir, anyone else? Thank you. Next is the chairman's report. Tonight we have us Maud and Jenkins and our finance director, Ms. Brittany White. If you guys would come, Maud and Jenkins is our auditors, if you guys would come on up tonight. Gonna give us an update on our audit.
Well, uh. Alright, well, uh, good evening, everyone. I hope you all are doing well, again, my name's David Irwin, and I'm with Maud and Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the county's financial statements, and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening to discuss the results of this year's audit. I won't take up too much of your time, but again, the, the purpose of this presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors' report, talk about the two compliance reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, discuss some information that the auditing standards require that we communicate to you all, and then finally to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves that had been presented to you all, all the responsibility of management and members of the board, as your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to issue an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audits in accordance with governmental auditing standards and generally accepted auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want, this is the highest level of assurance that we can provide your external auditor, but this means is that in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Again, as part of the audit, there are two compliance reports that we also issue, the first of which is the single audit report. Again, a single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity has over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal expenditures during the year. You all had around fifty-five, I'm sorry, fifty-four point four million dollars of federal expenditures, expenditures this year, which resulted in us having to perform a single audit on your ARPA funds. As was the case with the financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. The second compliance report is the yellow book report. Again, this is a report on the county's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm happy to say that we do not have any audit findings reporting you all this year, meaning we know, we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the county's internal controls during our audit. And, you know, as I mentioned to you all last year, for a county your size, there's quite a bit of financial activity for which you all have to account for. In addition, to all the new accounting standards are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all the more impressive to be able to present you all an audit that not only has a clean opinion, but also no audit findings. So again, that's certainly something you all should be proud of, and, you know, to me, it's, it's a testament to the hard work done by your staff. Brittany and her team, once again, did a great job this year, they had everything ready for us. They were very accommodating to our audit team and, and worked hard to provide us all the necessary information that we needed in order to get the audit finalized by the December thirty-first deadline. So again, just want to thank your staff for all their hard work again this year. Now for a brief overview of your financial statements. Again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an act for. Now again, an act for requires the inclusion of additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. They have a, not only their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee that looks at your report. And when they look at the county's act for, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the county. What they want to do is to make sure that the necessary information is in this report so the readers of your financial statements could do so themselves. And through their review, the county has once again been awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And that, that certificate is included in this year's report. So again, this is, this is an impressive document, and it's certainly something that, that you all should be proud of. As you look through the report, you know, one section I always like to point out is the Management Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the M D N A. It's towards the beginning of the document, it's right after our audit opinion. I always encourage everyone to read the M D N A. You know, the purpose of the M D N A is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements. And it does this by providing a narrative explanation or a narrative summary of the financial statements from management's perspective. So, you know, if you have a question about any fluctuations in activity, anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, oftentimes you can find your answer within the M D N A. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section. There's financial activity not only in the current year, F Y twenty-four, but also F Y twenty-three as well. Which again, you know, to me adds a lot of value to the reader, you know, it gives you much butter, much better understanding of the current year activity when you have those prior year numbers there for comparative purposes. So, again, if, if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read the M D N A. The county's basic financial statements are broken down into three components, the first of which is the government-wide financial statements. Now this section provides a broad view of the county's operations, similar to what you would see in a private sector business. Of all the funds that you all have, they're combined into one of two columns, depending on the nature of the fund. You have a column for your governmental activities, and you have a column, you have a separate column for your business-type activities. But we have a slide here that, that summarizes the county's financial activity for the year from the government-wide perspective. You know, again, as you can see, the county ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources of around five hundred and two million dollars. Approximately two hundred and seventy-two million of that are your capital assets and net of accumulated depreciation. Again, when I talk about capital assets, that's your land, buildings, machinery, equipment, et cetera, that's owned by the county. Also included in total assets was around one hundred and eighty-three million dollars in cash and investments. Look at your liabilities, they're around one hundred and fifty-eight million. Of that amount, around one hundred and thirty-six million are long-term in nature, meaning they're not due within the next fiscal year, so. Total revenues are around two hundred and twenty-three million, and you all had expenses of just under two hundred million. And this resulted in an ending net position of approximately three hundred and forty-four million dollars, which is an increase of twenty-three point two million for the year. You know, as you can see on the screen, for comparative purposes, your net position actually decreased in the prior year by about eight point three million. So that's, that's quite a big, quite a good turnaround, having an eight point three million dollar decrease in net position in F Y twenty-three, and then now having a twenty-three point two million dollar increase in net position in F Y twenty-four. So, you know, again, all in all, a good year for the county from entity-wide perspective. You had around a seven percent increase in your net position. The county, again, has a strong balance sheet and is, and is in good shape financially. The second component of your financial statements are your fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. The fund-level statements, they focus on individual parts of the government, and they report your operations in more detail than that of the entity-wide. And, you know, with all the funds of the county, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the county, so therefore that's where the majority of your revenues are received and funds expended. But we have a chart here that breaks down the general fund's revenues for the year. Again, this is just for the general fund. The total revenues were around ninety-five point eight million. That's around an eight point two million dollar increase compared to F Y twenty-three. You know, again, as you can see on this chart, obviously, the vast majority of the general fund's revenues are derived from taxes, which totaled around seventy-six point eight million. And that represented about eighty percent of the total revenues for the general fund. Again, taxes, adequate property taxes, franchise taxes, sales taxes, sales taxes, et cetera, that was collected during the year. A couple of other significant sources of revenue worth mentioning, you all had charges for services of just under five and a half million. Intergovernmental revenue around seven million, and licenses and permits of about one and a half million for the year. This next chart presents the general fund's expenditures for the year by function. Expenditures totaled about eighty-five million, that's about a five point one million dollar increase compared to F Y twenty-three. You know, again, as you would expect, public safety represents a significant portion of your expenditures. Public safety was around forty-eight point six million dollars, and that accounted for approximately fifty-seven percent of the general fund's total expenditures. General government expenditures were around thirteen and a half million, and judicial expenditures were around seven point seven million for the year. In total, the general fund's fund balance increased by about two point six million for an ending balance of sixty-one point two million for the year. We have a chart here that, that shows the fund balance history of the general fund over the past five years. You know, it, it's always interesting to kind of look at these type charts and, you know, kind of reflect back on where you were, where you are now compared to where things currently stand. But again, as you can see, you all have done a great job of increasing your fund balance over this period. You know, twenty twenty was obviously a unique year due to COVID. But with everything that's gone on over the past five years and the economic uncertainty that has followed it, again, it's impressive to see how you all continue to stay within budget and increase your fund balance. So again, that's something that the board, management, and really everyone involved in the county should not only be committed for, but be proud of. So again, congratulations to you all on that. Again, as I mentioned before, you know, one thing I always like to remind people, fund balance, that's not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Again, fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is cash on hand. Additionally, another thing to keep in mind, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately seven million dollars per month. So you all ended the year with an unassigned fund balance equal to around eight months' worth of operating expenditures. And again, with you all having the June thirty year end, you know, it's good to see that the county has a strong fund balance during that time to cover your expenditures, you know, through the months of July through October, again, when your, when your revenues are typically down compared to other times of the year. And, you know, not to belabor this point, but you know, one question I'm often asked is, you know, as long as we're able to pay our current obligations, you know, what's the point of having a strong fund balance? And, you know, there's several reasons for this, one of which I just mentioned. Again, property taxes represent a, a significant portion of your revenues, and they're cyclical in nature. So a strong fund balance has of June thirty, again, as I mentioned, gets you through those months of July through October, July through November, when your revenues are lower than they are during other times of the year. Other reasons that we have on the screen, you know, it's available to cover its significant emergencies and unanticipated expenditures. It provides the county with flexibility for discretionary spending. There's a potential for better interest rates when you all go out in the market, which again, would save you money. And, you know, it's definitely important in uncertain economic times. And again, we've seen that, right? You know, from the financial crisis in two thousand and eight to the, to the global pandemic in twenty twenty to, to weather-related issues that we sometimes unfortunately have to deal, deal with here in the South. If I'm in your shoes, it's, it's comforting to see that you all have a strong fund balance to get you through those events. So again, congratulations to you all on that. A couple of other funds I want to briefly mention are the two enterprise funds, the two major enterprise funds of the county, which again, are the water sewer, are the water fund and the solid waste fund. Again, enterprise funds, they're used to account for operations similar to that of a private sector business. You know, the goal of these funds are to be self-sufficient and to generate enough operating revenues, revenues to cover their operating expenditures, expenses, I'm sorry. We have a chart here that shows the revenues and expenses for these funds. Again, as you can see, the water fund had operating income of a little over two million dollars for the year. And while the solid waste fund did have an operating loss, it had transfers in from other funds of around one point seven million to offset that loss. So, again, just kind of want to briefly highlight these two funds. One final item to discuss with you all, again, is certain information the auditing standards require us to we communicate. With you all receiving a clean opinion, no audit findings, the information on this slide is essentially formality, but we received full cooperation from management staff. We had no disagreements with management on any kind of accounting-related issues. We had no uncorrected misstatements. And again, we are in it, we are independent of the county as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to address that at this time. But I, I do want to thank you and thank your staff again for all their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for being here today, sir. First of all, I want to congratulate Brittany and her team. You guys always do a great job, thank you so much, Mr. Cooper. With that being said, Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. So during the course of the audit, when we came into solid waste, other words, they paid for everything through the solid waste? There was no money that came from general fund?
Well, they, they, again, as you see on the slide, you, this, this is their operating revenues and operating expenses. They did have a, they did have an operating loss this year.
Okay.
But we had transfers in from other funds to offset that loss. But yeah, from, from an operational standpoint, they did have a loss this year.
Okay, so they didn't, so they didn't receive any from, from our general fund to help with?
Well, there, there, again, there were transfers in from other funds to help offset that loss, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long, you didn't have anything, okay, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, so, and thank you for that. And I, I just can't say how pleased I am with Brittany and her staff for this report, or for this audit, these audit findings or lack thereof. So, but I, just, just to be clear, this, these, the, the, the balance sheet is a snapshot as of June thirty, twenty twenty, or all, all the financial statements are as of June thirty.
The, the, the balance sheet is, has of that day, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Your income statement encompasses the activity for that fiscal year, which is July first through June thirty.
My gotcha, thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, county manager report, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, all members and residents of the community. I come before you today with the county manager's report. We're gonna talk about processes today. And in reference to processes, we're gonna talk about our Notify Newton app. Our Notify Newton app is the easiest way for our residents to contact us with any infrastructure concerns that they may have. And we found it very useful. When we look at the use of it in twenty twenty-four, we found that we had one thousand one hundred and sixty-three issues that were provided to us through the Notify Newton app. And next, we're just gonna do a quick promo of how this app actually works.
Welcome to the Notify Newton app, which allows residents to communicate directly with staff to submit requests such as repair a pothole, pick up trash that is spilled onto the roadway, and address residential issues. You can sign up and receive notifications for such things as community meetings, ribbon cuttings, ground breakings, B O C meetings, and more. Your requests help us to respond to things that improve our community, whether it be code enforcement issues, improvements needed in our roadways, and other non-emergency situations. Now let's take a look at how Notify Newton works through this example of reporting a pothole. Open the app, which can be found on the App Store or Google Play. To add a new request, you must select the blue plus sign. You can also see where other requests have been placed onto the map. After uploading an image, you can type the exact address of the request or move the cursor around the map to place the request. Once you have chosen the location, you must select a category. Next, type in the description of the issue. Once you have submitted the request, it will place on the map. And if you are signed in to Notify Newton, it will send you an email. After submitting the request, employees at Public Works will receive an email about the newest request. As Public Works assigns the request to the correct crew, they will also receive a work order number. The work order number is then placed on the Notify Newton app to inform citizens that the request has been assigned. If you are logged into Notify Newton, you will receive an email with the work order number. This allows you to keep track of your request. Once the requests have been assigned, it is then placed into the Public Works Daily Work Reports box, which allows assigned crews to know what they must fix. When Public Works has completed the request, you will be notified via email saying the work is completed, along with the date it was finished. There have been almost two thousand requests submitted through Notify Newton, with residents engaging directly with county staff to have their issues resolved. Please share our story of Notify Newton with your friends or neighbors. Download Notify Newton today.
It's a quick way for us to be as responsible, as responsive as possible for our residents, and we encourage all residents to use the app at your convenience. At this time, I want to ask that Mr. James Brown come forward and give an update on the water levels and testing.
Good evening, guys, I do want to, I want to remind you that we do have a hard stop at seven thirty. We're gonna enter directly into zoning, and we may have to come back to this, okay? All right, go ahead, sir. No, no, go ahead.
I wanted to give a brief overview of the testing that we've done for PFAS from the Williams Street location, Cornish Creek location, that's what we've tested throughout the, of last year, twenty twenty-four. With all the testing that we've done through the twenty twenty-four, we had non-detects across all, of all the positions that are required for us for testing. As you can see, that we've gone through by quarter, and each test that we've performed during that timeframe came back as non-detect. Well, we wanted to also show you the difference between the water that's been treated from the Cornish Creek facility versus the Williams Street facility. Last month of December, the Cornish Creek facility pumped out four hundred and ninety-three million gallons, I think, it was around that number. The amount that was actually pumped out from the Williams Street was three, three million gallons. So the percentage is like point zero two nine percent of the water that came from, from Williams Street. So even with that small amount of water, we still tested just to make sure that the PFAS level was within detect, non-detectable range, and that the results came back during that time as non-detect. You have any questions?
Any, any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman. A question that I have is that, I think the previous time that we, that we spoke, you know, that you, Ben, Jane, well, first of all, thank you. You know, because you, you kind of, you're very informative, and we appreciate your service and as a employer of Newton County. And what you had told me previously, at some part in some of my meetings, was that the PFAS, most of PFAS was coming from Williams Street plant, and that y'all would turn it on and turn it off, and there were low levels, and now we got down to, to no levels at all, and which is very good for the citizens of Newton County. But the question that some of my constituents had asked is how long before we get down to zero levels of PFAS, which is forever chemicals? How long? How long had, had we, had it been in our water system? Had it been in there for a year, two years, three years, four years? And when are we going to cut the discontinuing the Williams Street plant to his will? And one last question. How, how many other carcinogens in our water are there? Because I believe there was more than just PFAS. There was some other one or two. And what are their percentages in our water?
Yeah, absolutely. To answer your last question first, there, there are 29 constituents of the PFAS molecule. We've tested for as many as the technology is available to test. And as of right now, all those detectable ranges have reported back as non-detect. Currently, to answer your question about Williams Street, currently, we had to publish from the EPD a two-part that was published, I think it was Wednesday, that a non-Z, which mean no significant impact to the environment, for the Cornish Creek facility upgrade and the Williams Street decommissioning. That was the next step. We have one more step to go. But that is the next to the final step of actually finally decommissioning the Williams Street facility. To your first question, that part we don't know because it was mandatory from the government that we start testing for this particular compound. And then that's when we started notifying the Commissioners around that time, also EPD and EPA.
Absolutely. So, my last, I guess my last question is, and it's brief, is that are there any testing for the people who may have been exposed to PFAS for a period of time?
You can, oh, I'm sorry.
And, and, and where might we find it and what might the cost be?
To my knowledge, as of right now, from EPA, you can request a test from your local, your physician. The, the only problem is you will not know where the PFAS came from.
Guys, we're going to have to jump in. It is actually 7:30 and we're going to move into our zoning. We'll bring you back up shortly here. We're going to move into, move into our zoning tonight. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. Thank you for being here tonight. We're ready to move forward.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. We have two petitions this evening. First, the first petition is a conditional use permit. It is CUP 24-000012. The proposed use is for an adult daycare center. It's located at 3615 Salem Road in units 1 through 3. It is located on 2.13 acres, the tax ID number of 0013043. The future land use map is a development node and the existing zoning is general commercial. And it's also located in the Salem overlay tier 3, which is a town center. It is in the Yellow River, the South River watershed, rather. And the character areas are the live-work corridors as well as the established suburban core. This is located in Commissioner District 2. The current owner is Any Occasion Events LLC and our petitioners are Kiwanah Robinson and Parachi Elmore. Just a brief history, on January 28th, the Planning Commission recommended approval for this conditional use permit to locate the adult daycare center at this Salem address. And again, the applicant is seeking to have the adult daycare center at this location and in the general commercial zoning and the tier 3 of the overlay. And just a brief site plan analysis, on the 2.13 acres is owned at general commercial. It is surrounded by both commercial as well as residential properties. The site contains a 118,000 square foot commercial building, among other buildings. And this is the building that it's going to be located in. And they're proposing to use the first three units in that building. And these are the general design standards for fencing and signage that the applicant would have to adhere to. And we have our applicable section, which is Section 510-220, which specifies the requirements for an adult daycare center. And these are both located in your packets, so I won't read through them. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit request to operate the adult commercial daycare center in the building location with staff's recommended conditions. Recommended conditions. So, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for a cup for an adult daycare center conditional, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, to limit the number of total occupants per suite to the occupant load set by the Newton County Fire Marshal. B, provide a sprinkler inspection as determined by the Newton County Fire Marshal. And prior to the release of a business license, provide a copy of an approved fire inspection to the Newton County Fire Marshal and to Development Services and to complete an annual fire inspection from the fire services. D, prior to the release of the business license, provide a copy to staff of state licenses and a disaster preparedness plan as required by the Department of Community Health. E, maintain compliance with Section 510-220 of the Newton County zoning ordinance. And F, prior to any construction, addition, or removal of walls within the suites, the applicant must apply for all required building permits. And G, obtain environmental health as applicable for approval before the issuance of a business license. And this is our current aerial showing the location. So, this is the building here. It's one of several buildings on the lot. And just a close-up, it's the three suites to the far left. Current zoning is general commercial, the pink area. Salem overlay tier 3. And this is located in the two plaza just opposite the Kroger, just for reference. It's the future land use map is a development node as shown. And of course, the South River watershed. And Commissioner District 2. This is a survey that was provided by the applicant. This is a concept drawing of their proposed layout inside of the three suites. And if there are any questions for staff, if not, Chairman, this is a public hearing.
Thank you so much. We're going to move directly into our public hearing now. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor, you may come. You have 10 minutes to do so tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening and welcome. State your name and your address for the record, please.
Kiwanah Robinson, 385 Long Creek Drive, Covington, Georgia.
Parachi Elmore from Forsyth, Georgia.
Greetings. You may begin.
So, we are proposing to open the adult health services in Covington, Georgia. We are just giving an alternative to nursing home placement for elderly's in the community. And with our adult day center, we are going to be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, giving any elderly's that are staying home by themselves or people caring for their mom or dad who also have to work, they can bring them to our facilities for respect care. We also provide entertainment for them, meals, medical care throughout the day. And then they can go home with their families in the evening. We are also going to be providing rehab services on the other side so that if any of the clients need any rehab services for physical therapy, occupational therapy, we would be able to provide that as well.
Thank you. Do you have anything?
I do not. She covered it all.
Thank you so much. We'll save your time just in case you guys have something else later, okay? Anyone else would like to, you can, you can take a seat now. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Would anyone else like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow 10 minutes for those that like to, would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Thank you so much. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on back up. I think this is Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry, and Ms. Elmore for your presentation. I've had a few different conversations with Ms. Robinson in regards to her vision with this particular adult daycare. And so, I want to say thank you for what you are wanting to bring to our community. I think really helping our senior community is vital. It is important. And I think the work that you're going to bring, not only to District 2, but to Newton County, will be very, very beneficial to our county. And so, thank you for that. And so, with that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion to approve CUP 24-000012 with staff recommendations.
Thank you so much. It's a motion by Commissioner Mason that we approve this whenever a second tonight. It's a motion by Commissioner, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards, motion by Commissioner Mason, second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five votes. Thank you so much. Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Chairman. Our second case this evening is a rezoning. It is REZ 24-0000010. There was a companion case that was heard earlier by the board, which was a flume amendment, which is FLU 24-000003. Location is 1575 Access Road. It's on 2.83 acres. Tax ID or the map and parcel number is 004304C. The future land use is industrial. The existing zoning is general commercial. The proposed zoning this evening is M1 light industrial. It is located in the Yellow River watershed and the character area is live-work corridor. This is located in District 4 and the owner is H Rep Access Road LLC. And our petitioner is TJ Colston and the rep today is John Michael Bush. And applicant's intent is to rezone this property to general, from general commercial to light industrial. And again, it's the entire 2.83 acres. And they're, they're wanting to rezone from commercial to industrial. And as a brief history, this came before you initially as a rezoning to rezone .8 acres of the property to general commercial so that the entire parcel would be general commercial. And this was back in June of last year. And the board approved that in August of last year. In October, the applicant sought a flume, which is a future land use map amendment to, from commercial to industrial because they were looking to rezone the property now to industrial. So, that flume was approved by the Board of Commissioners in November of last year. And last month, on the 28th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning petition to rezone from general commercial to light industrial. So, they initially moved from general commercial and they're now going to light industrial. But they, you know, had to do the flume change first to do that. And again, the character area is the live-work corridor and the appropriate land use is industrial as well as an appropriate zoning. And this is included in your packets. And for her site plan analysis, the applicant is proposing again to rezone to light industrial. Given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for that area. And in conclusion, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed rezoning to M1 light industrial is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. Given the designation of the future land use as industrial, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate since it will be consistent with adjacent properties and uses. And recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for light industrial, M1, conditional, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. And where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to the following. A, prior to any new uses, all permits shall be obtained as applicable. And B, it must obtain and maintain a business license as applicable. So, this is currently the parcel that we're looking at. This is just aerial. We have a lot of commercial and industrial uses in the vicinity. And we have our current zoning, general commercial. Above here, we've got industrial zoning. This is office institutional. This is mitigated wetlands. So, that's never going to be developed. And of course, we've got our commercial on this side. We have our future land use, which is industrial, and the parcel adjacent is also industrial. And all to the north, across I-20, all of that in purple is an industrial flume. Is in the Yellow River watershed. Commissioner District 4. The live-work corridor, character area. This is a survey that was submitted by the applicant. And the petitioner has some slides he would like to share with you, Chairman, and this is a public hearing as well.
Thank you so much. We're going to go directly into the public hearing. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor, you may come at this time. If you have 10 minutes to do so, please state your name for the record, please. Name your address if you don't mind. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight.
Good evening. John Michael Bush, 2100 Powers Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Good evening, Commissioners. Here tonight on behalf of the applicant and the owner, which is Hickory Real Estate Partners. We bought this property back in early October. After, as Ms. Applewhite said, we came forward to rezone a small portion of the property that was zoned office institutional. We don't know the nature of the original zoning. It looks almost like a map error. Kind of had no rhyme or reason. It's the little blue piece that has the red outline on the south side of the parcel. So, prior to closing on the property, we came forward just to clean that up. So, we had one uniform commercial general zoning. Since closing on the property, our tenant, who was the occupant for the last 20 or so years, has actually relocated to a new location in Loganville, where they're taking that store's business and some of the inventory, spreading it across Loganville and McDonough to their other stores. It's Big Tex Trailer. As we're going to re-lease this property, we've made some light improvements, invested some money into it, mostly paint and aesthetic-type changes. But we're also looking to increase the marketability of the property. The re, that's the reason why we're here for M1. There are two uses in particular that are in M1 and as permitted uses that are not in commercial. Those are equipment rental, oh, excuse me. Those are equipment rental and building materials, which when, and this is the current zoning after we've, we've gotten the little blue sliver cleaned up. This is an aerial of the property to, to give a little bit of context of what's around. This is a very heavy commercial and light industrial area on both the north side of 20 and the south side of 20, bounded by Almond Road to the south, or I guess to the west, and the old Oxford Road Bridge to the east. So, we, we think largely speaking, an M1 use is highly complementary with everything out there. We're, we're pretty much surrounded by truck parking to our south and to our west, and then equipment rental, building materials, and then some RV and boat storage across the way. With that being said, I couldn't reserve the rest of my time if you all have any questions. But we're, we're excited to have, have the property a little bit more marketable and bring a, a new high-quality business to Newton County.
Thanks so much. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow 10 minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. If you would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Mr. Chairman, I already don't know if I'm
Mr. Chairman, I already don't know if I'm opposing, because there's some questions. I have land in that area. I have green space land that I won't let get developed. That's the reason I hold on to it, causing my love for the Yellow River. So the questions I have is in this floodplain property, in this two point eight three acres. And the second would be, whatever's going in here, what's going to be the traffic going in and out? I know y'all do traffic studies for large properties. But a hundred small properties can equal large pro, property. So that's just the questions I've got without knowing anything. It looks like on, on the plat, there may be some wetlands real close by. Is any of it on this two point eight three acres? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to oppose tonight? Anyone else like to oppose tonight? Anyone else like to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Sir, would you like to come back up for the remainder of your time? I think it's seven minutes and twenty-nine seconds.
I see the question about the wetlands and floodplain. Our property is out of both. There was, the property immediately south was sold for a wetland mitigation bank, but we're a hundred percent outside of the floodplain and wetlands. And as far as traffic goes, this is an existing property, and the existing use is very similar to the two uses we're proposing for this zoning. So the traffic won't change substantially from what's out there right now.
Thank you, sir. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I think Commissioner, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Miss Lee. I have just a question for Ms. Applewhite. Is that, uh, did you look at the floodplain? Because I want to be sure that there's no floodplains on the property.
Um, okay, so if we... The floodplain is further south, this entire area here. Um, I think about a year ago, we came before the board for, uh, to do a minor plat, and it was a wetlands mitigation down here. So most of the floodplain is to the south here. It's, I don't, if I remember correctly, there's none closer to the road there where that parcel is.
One last question. Would approving this partial of, of property would decrease anybody's property beyond where all this, all this stuff is at? All this industrial equipment and stuff is at?
Um, Commissioner, I couldn't, uh, attest if it will increase or decrease surrounding properties, but the uses will be similar to what is adjacent and nearby in the area. This is a heavy commercial, light industrial use for many of the properties.
Thank you. Let's try and make a motion to approve with our staff recommendations.
Is there a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Long. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chairman.
We're going to revert back to the county manager's report. Um, Mr. Brown, if you, if you would, please come on back up, sir. I think Commissioner Henderson had asked you a question, and you want to go ahead and finish. You want to answer. Commissioner, you want to repeat your question, please?
Yeah, I think the question I was asking, here, Mount James, if I can get exactly what we, we talked about. It was about the PFAS and about the, uh, the testing. I think another thing was testing, the PFAS, about the testing. You were saying you had to go to, to where? You want to get test, a test for PFAS?
Lieutenant, you talking about where we send them testing, or what?
If I wanted testing. And you reminded me, so where PFAS could be in this ball of water, whatever it may be, but if I wanted testing, to test my, my body and see how much PFAS was in it, then I could go where?
You can ask your local physician, your physician.
Local physician? So, uh, man, I put the number that had been thrown out to me a, a while back, was it may cost a million dollars? I didn't think it may would cost that much, but I'm going to ask my physician exactly for that. And so how long had, and I guess the next question is, how long had we been testing? There was, uh, things regulated by the federal government for PFAS in our water system?
If I recall correctly, we've been testing for PFAS since twenty nineteen. Uh, the initial testing phase, uh, calls for all communities who had a military installation in their community to, to start testing at that point. And if I'm recalling the, the date correctly, I think it was twenty nineteen.
So, so this is about five, six years?
Yes.
Okay, five, six years. So in, and so I could go and get tested, go to my doctor, tell him I want to test within my butt, butt stream, and he could tell me how much, uh, buildup of PFAS, uh, might be, you know, might be in my body. And, and I understand where it come, where it come from and everything. But the fact that it was, to me, that it was in our water system, that was a concern of mine. Because it's a simple fact is, I think it's our job, um, or my job as a district commissioner, to make sure that whenever there's something that could, uh, harm citizens of Newton County, then I need, we need to take a good, close look at it and make sure that, uh, we are danger and make sure that if anybody would need testing, that it could be tested. Now, I'm just going to say this, and I'm, and I'm just going to close it up and go to another question, to our county manager. Is that if we don't look out for it, the water commission, if we don't go out and say, well, we, we need to look at this, or we just see this test, then who's going to look out for us? See, all these plants here in Newton County are old, and there's a lot of chemicals. Unless somebody go ready to test them, maybe be, be released into our community into our water system. And I have run across some, uh, some of those over in Sella Grove in the district, that I still go over and talk to the peoples and, you know, and we, we share a common bond. And if we don't look out for us, then who will? Are we going to, are we going to look for it to our federal government? Because most of these are big plants and that, uh, have these chemicals in them. Are they self-reporting? Of course, when something bad, they report to the federal government. And so this, uh, part of my concern is to make sure that our constituents know exactly what's going on in our community. And, um, not, and I just simply call it transparency. Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. Cooper?
Our last update is the, last week I came before this board and gave a chronology of events in association to Nelson Heights, and I just want to give an additional update. On February eleventh, we will have a final scope assessment, and that'll take place on Tuesday, February eleventh. And then on February fourteenth, there will be the installation of this sign here at Nelson Heights as we can move forward with the construction piece of it. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Cooper, for, um, uh, working to open back up Nelson Heights, which had been closed for, um, I think, well, about two years? If I'm wrong, please correct me, because sometimes it seemed like longer than that to me, but it seemed like two years. And I would like, whenever you have time for you and I, and, uh, and maybe a couple of stakeholders, which we have, who always call me, and I always want to know what's going on, so you can give us a update at Nelson Heights as far as what we're going to be doing. And also, I know that the, um, are we going to be, uh, give away, uh, uh, money to run? Because we had talked about a, uh, access school to tour program for Nelson Heights. And we want to know, are they going to be, is it going to be fun like some of the others, uh, which are in, in Newton County as well? So those children can be, start back being tutor. And the re, excuse me. The reason why I'm still on that, because I know in reading how children are behind. I know they're behind. I know that in Banff, our kids are behind. This is the reason why Nelson Heights Community Service, we give away books and try to help as many kids as we can up to date for the past, uh, two years. And we know that it works better with kids when you have folks in the community, people from within the community helping out, so they won't come in with a strange, uh, stranger. And so, um, it's all to me, uh, about, um, communicating to your stakeholders, to peoples in the community, about what's going on in that particular facility and making sure that, that they know. I will be planning a, um, meeting of that community. And, uh, I'm hoping, you said the last meeting, one of the first meeting, uh, you said February eleventh, I think. Am I right, Ms. Cooper?
Correct.
And so what days that might be on?
That's a Tuesday.
On a Tuesday. So we, um, February tenth, unless there's some reason that we can't, we would call a, uh, community meeting on February tenth with the community at Nelson Heights, so that we can talk about it, unless there's some reason, another we can't. So, um, let me know, so I can inform the community, so we can talk about what, what's, what's going to be happening at Nelson Heights. Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Thank you.
That's everything, sir.
That concludes my report, sir.
Um, Commissioner Lindsay?
Uh, Mr. Cooper, I understand that District Four is not my district. Um, but I have a vested interest in making sure that the students in the Nelson Heights area get the services that they need at this particular facility. Is it possible for us to set a timeline for when it is that we propose to have a program implemented so that the kids, at least by the summer, can have supplemental help to address their deficiencies for the following school year?
Yes, that wouldn't be a problem, and that's why the February eleventh meeting is so critical, because we'll be putting in baseline measures and a timeline as the construction piece can, you know, commence.
Is it possible to make it a hard timeline? Because while, like I said, District Four is not my community, um, we do represent all of Newton County, and we do know based upon some of the studies that have been published that unfortunately District Four's students are suffering in terms of their reading comprehension. And so with that being said, for there to be no services for a series of time for the kids, I think that that's a disservice that the board has in District Four. And so while Mr. Henderson and I don't agree on everything, we will agree on the fact that there desperately needs to be a proven program.
Absolutely.
A proven program, not just any program, a proven program implemented in District Four, so the kids can get the services. And I would like to see that program implemented with a hard deadline, so that by the time the summer comes, these kids can get services during the summer.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards, and then Commissioner Henderson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So back to, to, uh, notify Newton of the eleven hundred sixty-three requests that came through in twenty twenty-four. I, I probably put in eleven hundred of those, so. But I, I tell you that because I do that anonymously, not as a commissioner. And it serves a couple of purposes, right? I get to experience what our citizens experience when they use that app. And I got to tell you, it's been an outstanding experience for me using it, not, not as a commissioner, but as a citizen. Sometimes on behalf of other citizens, but, um, it's a wonderful app. If you have a smartphone, download that app on your smartphone, and don't, don't be afraid to take advantage of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, and, uh, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner, District Commissioner, you are one hundred percent totally right about the children felony math. In fact, I was just like, piggyback on what you said. They are, it's, they're all over Newton County. Uh, especially in the, um, on, in the area where kids, um, I don't have as much as other kids. And so that's why I've been a voice, uh, have spoke up now for the kids in District Four, but also in District Three, Two as well. And I'm hoping that we can have a scope of work as far as a park in that particular district, because I like you, Commissioner Akia. And it's not fair or not right for us not to have a park in District Three, and we got them in every other, uh, district, uh, in Newton County. So I would like for, if we could, to make sure that that date is a good date. If not, let me know, we'll set up another date, uh, Mr. Cooper, our county manager. And so we can set up a time for the people to come on tenth. I'm a firm believer that if you are in the district that's being affected, then you notify the people who are in that district or talk to them first, because I believe the charity, charity belongs, starts at home. And you let them know, and then you move it abroad for the whole entire, you know, for everybody else who may want to know. And let them have their say and see what they want to say. And I'm pretty sure, um, District Commissioner, uh, Stephanie, I keep wanting to call you Turner Lindsay, I'm sorry. Uh, in this, you know, in, in, um, in District Four, that we need to let them know so they can be prepared what's coming, because they've been waiting so long for this, for this something to happen over there that's good. And, um, and let's start off fresh in new, and make sure that they're good with, good with, um, some of the people that's going to be there, which I don't, I believe. And I would like to see some teachers from Newton County High School, uh, be a part of it. I mean, you know, it's nothing too much that we could do for our children in our community. And so this, this what I've always been about, and this what I continue to be about. It's our children and our seniors. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson, I really enjoy going to your fireside chats and your town hall, so I look forward to February tenth.
I know about the whole fireside chats we went to. And hopefully this will be more or less of, of me speaking, and we're answering questions. What can you tell me about, um, about what I can or can't do? And that's why I always suggest that we meet first, like what I'm talking about in the light, so we can kind of talk out our little bit of a difference. And so we have, go have a real nice meeting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Um, you, you good? All right. Thank you so much, sir. Um, next is unfinished business. We don't have any. Next is, oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is going to be for the consent agenda.
God, I seek a motion that we approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Lindsay. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five oh.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is our new business, item number ten, being presented by our Judge Ken Nguyen. It's the Newton County Adult Felony Drug Court. Request permission to apply for a fiscal year twenty-six state accountability court grant through the Council of Accountability Court Judges.
Good evening, sir, and, um, thank you for being here tonight. Our Chief Judge, Judge Nguyen. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, may I present ten and eleven on behalf of Judge McCamey?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, this is the redemptive and restorative part of, of our jobs as judges, and it is to help those who are addicted to substances or alcohol to be free of that and stop committing crimes as a result of that, and then help them get on the road to becoming productive citizens of the community. The grant from the Council of Accountability Court Judges and the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council fund a large part of our operating costs. There is a match involved, matching funds involved in both of those, uh, and those funds come out of local funds. And we, uh, was texting Judge McCamey that they have people who help support the cost of that, uh, court, the Veterans Court. And have to, hopefully, not brag, but I think let the people of Newton County know that, uh, the Drug Court, the Adult Felony Drug Court, and the Resource Court, the Mental Health Court, which is operated by Judge Zion. Both of those were named model courts twice by the Council of Accountability Court Judges. Uh, the Veterans Court, operated by Judge McCamey, since it has come under her leadership, has been named as a model court by the council. Uh, and that means that we're meeting standards. It means that we're, uh, hopefully doing things the right way, and then have an opportunity to go and help other courts meet standards as well. I had my doubts about Drug Court when I first heard about it. But back in twenty eleven, I went to some training and really came to be a believer in Drug Court and Accountability Courts and just... and really came to be a believer in Drug Court and Accountability Courts. And just to let you know, I've provided some research there for you from the council, uh, concerning processes and outcomes, but also concerning the economic impact that, that Accountability Courts make in local communities and the state. But I've got data for our Drug Court, which shows that our recidivism rate within three years of a participant graduating from Drug Court, our recidivism rate is ten percent. That compares to a statewide Drug Court recidivism rate average of twenty-eight point three percent. And comparison group that is people who are placed on probation or go to prison, their recidivism rate is thirty-nine point five percent. So the research shows that Drug Courts do have an effect, uh, a positive effect, not only on communities, but on individual lives and families. And we're here to ask for permission to apply for the grant for CJCC, from, from the CJCC for both the Felony Drug Court and the Veterans Court. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. Gotta seek a motion, please?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. Uh, I think there's no greater joy than giving a man or woman a second chance.
Exactly right.
And, um, I appreciate you, and, um, I thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Lindsey?
I have had personal dealings, as you know, with, um, both courts, and I can say that I've had, uh, some clients that went to the Drug Court and were successful, and then some that were not successful. But the main thing was they had an opportunity to change their life. One individual actually had been in prison several times and was given an opportunity, um, to go to Drug Court to address his, um, condition because it kept helping him to offend. So definitely Drug Court, I would, I'm supportive of that one hundred percent. Veterans Court, um, I don't think that the community knows enough about what's being done in the Veterans Court in our community. Um, I had a client that actually had a PTSD episode in court. No one knew that he was suffering from PS, um, PTSD. And, um, literally Veterans Court changed his life.
Yeah.
I mean, literally changed his life. He would not participate in the VA programs. He, he was, he was very, um, stubborn in terms of accepting what he had been through. And him being around other veterans through that program and getting the, um, services that he needed helped him embrace it. And he's now living a very, very calm life with his family, and it changed his life. So I can't stress enough how important it is for us to support the Accountability Courts as well as for the community to take the time to go and visit the Accountability Courts as well as donate. Sometimes I think that they have little gift cards that they provide for incentives, um, to like Chick-fil-A or places that don't sell certain, um, utensils. But I think that we need to really give more attention to what's going on in Veterans Court and in the other Accountability Courts.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindsey. Yeah, we, we've had drug-free babies born in Drug Court, and, uh, it really is, I would much rather do Drug Court than send those people to prison.
Yes.
All in favor? It passes five-oh. Can I get a motion for number eleven as well? I'm sorry? No, we did ten. Now we're doing eleven now. Yep. Eleven, uh-huh. It was motioned by you. You made the motion. Edwards and Henderson. It was motioned by Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have items number twelve and thirteen being presented by Mr. James Brown, Director of Water Resources. The initial one is Cornish Creek WTB upgrades for Reeve Young procurement package and number thirteen Lowe's Design Amendment proposal.
Good evening. Welcome back, sir.
Uh, I'm, uh, requesting approval to purchase some long lead items for the Cornish Creek facility, uh, equipment, and also to give the, uh, for a phase three project of twenty-nine, uh, little over twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, what this is, is for the Cornish Creek facility, uh, we're doing a complete, um, a complete upgrade for the facility, taking it from twenty-five million to right at thirty-nine point five million gallons per day. The process is taking a little bit longer than we anticipated, getting this long lead item processed ahead of the final package, which I brought a, one volume of what we're going through right now. So we're going page by page, looking at every single item to make sure that we're getting the best cost and the unit price that we deserve as a community, uh, to utilize our funding as efficiently as possible. And also stand on the tag, the task order for the ARPA grant, which we know that has a, a timeline associated with it. This, uh, by approving this, this will keep us on timeline and also give us the opportunity to get those long lead items already in the hopper, um, to get the shop drawings and get into manufacturing also done. But it also gives us an added benefit by the county purchasing it ourselves. We can save one point three million dollars in tax savings.
Thank you, sir. Gotta seek a motion, please? Can I get a second, please? It's been motioned by Commissioner Mason and seconded by Commissioner Edwards. Any dis, any discussion? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So James, this, just to, I know it's stated here, but this, these are part of the, these are part of federal funds.
Yes.
American Rescue Plan Act, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and these were already allocated to your organization, to the, to the county via your organization, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, James.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Lindsey?
Um, Mr. Brown, you mentioned that, um, a part of your process in assessing what the cost would be is that you compared vendors?
That is correct.
Okay, is that something that you routinely do?
Yes, absolutely.
And so when you request the vendors, how do you do that?
We go out to vendors of, depending on the piece of equipment, we go to those vendors, multiple of them, and ask them to buy a specific, specific specification. Do they have a piece of equipment that matches these specific specifications?
And then you get the, the estimate or the cost for each, from each vendor?
That is correct. Now, because of depending on where that dollar lies, either we get them or it goes to a third party. Then we have to evaluate them before we actually look at that price.
And what was the cost of the savings that you have based upon this process that you engaged?
The, the saving thus far has, we haven't really quantified that savings yet, but looking at some of the vendors that we have chosen, as you see in your package, there's two vendors if you, uh, for the ozone units that we're purchasing. One was a little bit more, a little bit cheaper than the one we selected. The reason why we selected that one is because, one, we can eliminate the HVAC for that, that entire room, and the building actually was able to shrink significantly to apply for that particular vendor. So the three hundred and something thousand dollars that we, ish, that we saw that for the savings for the piece of equipment, we saved over one point five million by selecting a different vendor.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you, sir. Uh, next is citizens' comments.
We got one.
We got one. No, I'm sorry. We do got one more. We do have one more. Talk, talk to us about the park.
All right. This is for the South Side Park. This is in District One. This is at the Factory Shoals location. Uh, this is to do the upgrades for the, uh, different items that, um, that you see in your package. Uh, the, the contract amendment is for Lowe's Design to, uh, go to the complete design of that park, uh, so we can go out for contract or contract approval.
Thank you, sir. Gotta seek, well, Commissioner Edwards, I think this is in District One. Is there a second? It's been motioned by, uh, Commissioner Edwards and seconded by Commissioner, uh, Henderson. Um, any discussion? All in favor? It passes five-oh. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, next is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity. We allow citizens to make comments about, um, whatever. Uh, you have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Dave Norton of Newborn again. First off, I would like to remind everyone that is in the room and watching on YouTube, tomorrow afternoon at four P M. at the Newton County Board of Education Administrative Offices, they will be holding their third and final hearing for House Bill five eighty-one. Another thing that I've heard lately from several people is that growth is inedible. Maybe, but nothing happens unless we allow it. Some have already been allowed by previous boards in their zoning. But most things will have to come before this board or one of the mu- municipalities within the county. I've heard that other districts are full, and the only place for it to go is Districts One and Five. Let me be clear. I will stand with my, I will stand with my neighbors and friends in District Three against the growth that they do not desire. But we will not stand by and allow what has made the citizens of the West Side to become unhappy with their area to happen to the East Side. Plain and simple. We will save East Newton, and we will save West Newton. Uh, my second item is I would like to invite everyone here to the little town of Newborn on Saturday, the fifteenth, where we'll be holding our twenty-sixth annual Arbor Day Festival. You can come get a free tree to plant in your yard. We'll have music. We'll have tree climbing for the kids, Smokey the Bear. And yours truly, we'll be cooking three hundred hot dogs provided by Mansfield Market, so you get a free lunch. So please come out and see us. Fifteenth from eleven to one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Maya Allen, Newton County. Um, a couple of things. I think as a county, we need to determine whether or not we want the access road to be commercial, industrial, or residential. Because there in planning, there was a, a subdivision plat, preliminary, preliminary plat that was approved for a hundred and forty-three townhomes in District Three on the access road. So we need to make a decision, or we need to let people know that they'll have light industrial and commercial in their backyard. Two, I expected that there would be something on the agenda today regarding the West Side Community Center. There is one that you just mentioned, um, South Side Park that was started same time the West Side facility was, and they are in phase one. Where are we with determining where we're gonna put this park? We spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for somebody to tell us where to put it. Why is there a question? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dennis Tyler, District One, Five. I worked in chemical plant most of my life. Um, trained on chemicals, had to clean them up if you spilt them. The laws around chemicals. We pretty much got chemicals in every plant in Newton County. Even the food processing plant has to use chemicals. So I would hope that we, in zoning, really protect Cornish Creek and that area up there. I would also PFAS April twenty, twenty-four. The amount of PFAS you could have in order was dropping seventy parts per tree and down to four parts per tree. And four is zero now. And also, all jurisdictions have to test it by twenty twenty-seven, I believe. And it would come in effect by twenty twenty-nine, they expected. The war would be up to that. Now, the new administration, I believe, is gonna hold up on that somewhat, but I'm not sure. They're gonna relax some regulations. But, uh, we, in PFAS, biggest producers are, uh, paper plants. It's in foam that firefighters use. It's in stuff you make like shoes. So it's pretty much, most people probably got some in them, but, you know, it's just where you get it from. But you can control it, but, uh, in zoning, if you got one plant, maybe coming out for four. You know, I always look at multiples. If you got one plant, that may be giving you four, but you got twenty plants giving you four, it adds up. So, and I'd just like to see y'all instead of just looking at like a traffic study on one big place, worry about them on all the little places too. And, uh, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening. Frederick Johnson, ten thirty-six Highway one sixty-two, Covington. I came before this board, uh, before King's birthday. We were supposed to have, went out and worked on cemeteries on Martin Luther King's birthday, but it was just too cold, and I decided I wouldn't take anybody out that day. But anyway, a young lady had called me last week, and they went out to last Saturday to work on a cemetery. And I've promised that we're gonna do these four cemeteries this, this, this year, if I have to do them by myself. I'm planning on going out this Saturday at ten o'clock. I'm gonna start at the one, uh, one sixty-two across, uh, two twelve, about a quarter mile below two twelve, Twin River subdivision, right beside the road. We're gonna work on that se, on that cemetery. So if I can get some volunteers, I appreciate it because I turned eighty-six years old, eighty-six years old on the twenty-second. And I, I ain't got much time. I got more time behind me. I'll do in front of them, so. So let's, uh, put the word out. I need some volunteers, okay? Thank you. We're gonna get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Mason.
No comment.
Uh, Commissioner? So come on, we're gonna, I'm gonna allow you to have my time. I'm gonna give you my time.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Lawrence Bryant, uh, one sixty Av. Lear Drive, Covington, Georgia, uh, District Three. My question is, uh, this. I don't know if you had a discussion about this House Bill five eighty-one yet. And my, uh, question about this bill was if you are currently, uh, having exemptions now, special exemptions, uh, as a senior, as a veteran, a firefighter, uh, would this bill nullify those exemptions? That's my question. Cause I'm, I'm a senior, so, uh, get a special, uh, exemption. So my question is this, with this new bill, this bill five eighty-one, will this nullify those exemptions? Thank you.
So if you will hang around just for a quick second after the meeting, we'll let you talk to the county attorney, okay? All right, thank you, sir. Um, um, Commissioner Lindsey?
Um, just some updates in terms of what we've done as relates to some of the issues in District Three. Um, on yesterday, we had an opportunity to have our one-on-one meeting with the U D O, um, project managers. And it was supposed to be a one-on-one meeting, but I did, um, invite the public to come in and look at the meeting. There couldn't be any comments because it's supposed to be a one-on-one meeting, but, um, you had an opportunity to observe the actual meeting. We recorded the meeting, and my understanding is the recording has now arrived at the county level, and I guess they're vetting the recording so that we can go ahead and publish it to the community. So it was a, we had an hour, um, time period that ended up being two and a half hours and of going over each and every part of zoning in detail. And so with that being said, I understand that there may be a concern about the multi-use on the ax- about the multi-use on the access road as presented by an individual that came forward. And that's what the zoning is right now. But I did a detailed proposal on how to address that aspect of the road as it relates to District Three. And I would invite people to, once it is published, to listen to it and listen to every single minute of it. Because some of the concerns that have been addressed over the years are directly addressed in this presentation that, excuse me, the presentation that was done on yesterday. And so that's that. As it relates to, um, taxation, I'm happy to tell and report that, um, after painstakingly, and I'm using that word loosely, our tax commissioner was able to provide an update as to what the number is that the seniors that have been eligible for senior exemption, he was able to provide the number in terms of what the tax amount is that the county has collected over the last four years. And so for two thousand and twenty-four, the tax amount that seniors that met the senior exemption have been, um, have, was collected was three million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. So that's our anchor number. And so when we talk about senior taxation, I, I, I believe that all of us are on the same page in terms of trying to determine what kind of relief we're going to secure for the seniors. But that's an anchor number that we need to be looking at, at least for now, in terms of either significantly removing that from where we are or for us to eliminate it altogether. But I think we all have expressed that senior taxation relief is a priority to us and that's one of the numbers that we need to be looking at. As it relates to an update on the park, all I can tell you is there are a lot of people working. A lot of people working on that, a lot of people working on the youth, um, facility. We have made a commitment to getting those things done. I have been in office officially now for what, thirty-one plus four, thirty-five days? But I haven't just started working on those things in January. I've been working on those things since June. And I will not stop working on those things until we have accomplished that. Um, and so that's, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Edwards, I mean Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
It's alright. We could be, uh, brothers from another mother. Well, on, on a serious note, um, this is Black History Month. And I'm, I'm proud to say that as an adolescent who as a child used to come out here and sit in the back. And I think Reverend Harold Carr was the first district commissioner that I seen up here. And I said, whoa, what a big statue of a man that was the first African-American to sit up here. And that was, wasn't that long ago? It was nineteen seventy-six. He could reckon. I said, I said it was seventy, uh, seventy-seven. He knows it was nineteen seventy-six, J C. So he, he makes you, I knew exactly what date it was set there. I was no more proud, I was so proud of, of the TK Adams Building and remember Mr. TK Adams and Miss Adams uh, over, over at R. R. Cousins Historic School. Because it was the first building that, uh, that I guess was supported somehow or another by the county. And I was pleased to be a part of that. And also in the renovation of R. R. Cousins, you know, because it took a whole lot of years just to work with my fellow commissioners to get, to hopefully get that renovated and do a lot of good things in there, about eight million dollars. We even worked through the SPOCH program. They had denied us. The board had denied us. But glory be to God, you know, he, God had, uh, two more realms in the bush that, uh, making it happen now. We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be helping to, uh, go out and clean those graves off. Help him. We can get some of those employees, um, who go and pick up paper for, uh, half a day and they go over there and clean out probably many graves you want to clean off. It shouldn't be a problem of cleaning those graves off. And I'll just close with this. We have a beautiful community in Newton County, one that I loved my entire life. And when the good Lord calls me, I'm going to be buried here in the old historic black cemetery in Oxford. And let us together, let's not forget where we came from. Because if we don't forget where we came from, we won't have a clue as, for us where we going. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Long. Thank you. I gave my time away, so I'm going to say, um, there, there's no need for executive session, so I seek a motion that we adjourn, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson. Is there a second? Been seconded by Commissioner Long. All in favor? We stand adjourned.